We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. And Mayor Protam, do you have some announcements?
I do. I would just like to encourage everyone to join us on Sunday, May 26th, as we celebrate Elizabeth. Celebrate Elizabeth Ruffner. It will be her life celebration. It will be at the Elks. We'll go from 3:00 to 5:00. We expect a full house, or you probably want to arrive about 2:00. And we'll also be live streaming this online and also over at the Haseyampa. Prescott Media Center will be helping us with that. So we encourage everyone to come and let's celebrate Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Charlotte Evans, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protam.
Our dear, kind Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful to be here this day. We are grateful for this beautiful city that we live in. We are grateful for these men and women who serve and who have our best interest as well as the surrounding area in mind as they undertake this important job that they are doing. We are grateful, Heavenly Father, for the blessings that we have of being in this community and raising our families here. We thank Thee for these blessings, and we say these things humbly in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you Pastor and Mayor Protam. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protam Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, let's move on to presentations.
2019 World's Oldest Rodeo Update.
I'm doing great. Mayor, Council, great to be here. You know, it's always fun to come when you've got a kind of a successful story. We had a great year this year. The Prescott Frontier Days, the committee added 125,000 to the purse. We ended up paying out to the professional rodeo cowboys this year, $260,000, with about $300 more than that. We had 600 professional rodeo cowboys, and we had every current world's champion cowboy. So it's really who's who in the rodeo business. We, of course, for the last over 30 years have had the Vold's Rodeo Company with top stock. They hire five or six other subcontractors. So that way, we think that every performance at our rodeo, the professional cowboy can win something, and it's not really a drawn contest. It's whether you can ride or not, you know. So we did have a great year. We had some sellouts and, by golly, unbelievable ticket sales. You know, for the last 10, 12 years, the, we've been so fortunate that the ticket sales is just every year, we set a new record. You can see by this year, 2018, we did over $500,000 worth of tickets. And by golly, you know, that's not counting our beverage sale and a lot of other things that go on, of course, all the businesses in Prescott that benefit also. So we've been really fortunate with the great ticket sales, and I think our marketing company that, that we deal with, Tricia Lewis, Lewis Marketing, has done us a great job. And, you know, she's doing a lot of this marketing now that electronically that I wasn't in my generation, I guess. But I want to introduce Chris Graff here. He's the president of our association now, and we've got a great board of directors. We're working hard, looking forward to another great rodeo. This pre-ticket sales has been really done well, and I'll let Chris take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, JC. So, once again, for the fourth year in a row, Prescott Frontier Days, World's Oldest Rodeo, Best Historic Western Rodeo. Keep in mind, there's over 600 rodeos, so we're not, we've got a little competition on getting, getting some of these awards. Not pictured there because we just, just received it as the committee for Prescott Frontier Days got Turquoise Circuit, which is what we're in here, Committee of the Year for 2018.
Congratulations.
Pretty cool. JC mentioned kind of about the rodeo attendance. You can kind of see how it's gone over the years. This last year, we had four 100% sellouts. You can see we had an 88 and a couple 86s right at 90%. So ticket sales are great. Attendance is great. All, all 50 states, major cities, you can see some of those that, that come and see our rodeo. International representation. About all we're missing is Rocket Man, I think. We got everything else covered. And, so, I mean, we just got them coming from everywhere, and people hear about this rodeo, and it's, it's a, it's a big thing. You know, we got, started getting on our new billboards up there on top in the, in the center. And, of course, our Wild Horse Race this year, both sanctioning bodies are coming to work together, so we're sure to have a full ticket of wild horse racers every night, which, as you all know, that's, that's, people don't want to miss that part of it, so. USA Today, Prescott is the home of the world's oldest rodeo with rockin' action each 4th of July, and that whole week is just some rockin' action. There's some picture of the Tough Enough to Wear Pink folks, obviously, I take it very seriously, the breast cancer work we do, and then, of course, courthouse lighting, couple of the things that we give, we rodeo, we give. Community investment, kind of a little list here of some of the places that we give money back to the community. You're on Economic Engine. Attendance, as it, as it goes up each, each year, you can see what we have at the rodeo grounds. This includes the fair, the, the different things we have coming up and things like that, which we, as you guys directed us, we want more use of the rodeo grounds. I think our, what we're seeing right here is more use of the rodeo grounds. We do have an additional activity coming this year in August, is a tour company bringing 1,000 people a day, five, for five days, 200 to 300 volunteers to put it on. They want to experience a western experience between Phoenix and the Grand Canyon, so that goes on in August for two weeks. So we're continuing to find new, new things that we can do that, that have that western culture, have that, that kind of our, our mission. Tough Enough to Wear Pink, obviously, I just said, that's a big deal to us. We have Tough Enough to Wear Pink Night, which will be the second night of the rodeo. And then improvements and refurbishments. Some of the things we did last year, the two shacks out there, we call them shacks, they're actually beautiful buildings now, by the Yale Gardner and the entrance were completely redone, re-roofed, re, brand-new roofs put on them, repainted, fixed, things like that. Obviously, the cowboy bathrooms got done last year, some electrical upgrades to the vendor area that were much needed, improvements to the Coors Box announcer stand, things like that. Replaced sewer line in the justing room, and for the first year, in quite a few years, we didn't have to have a plumber on call 24 hours a day, so. The cowboys, believe me, they were, they were thanking us. Repaired, the paramedic stand was getting, getting kind of down, it's behind the bucking chutes there, it's where they stand, and we got that, better put a new, new top on that, so. About last year, 35,000, a little more than 35,000 that BFD put into the rodeo grounds. You can see kind of from 2007, 2018, we're about 263, well over that $1,000 invested into the rodeo grounds by Prescott Frontier Days. So now we talk about the 132nd Rodeo coming up, and JC said we keep, our marketing has just gotten better and better and better, and obviously, that has to do with a good marketing firm, but it also has to do with, with the digital marketing and all the things we do year-round, and pre-sales by the 15th to get Christmas presents and Mother's Day's presents and Valentine's presents. We're up about $16,000 from, right now, from where we were last year, so on our way to setting another attendance and, and ticket sales record, which helps us to up the cowboys ante and bring more cowboys to the rodeo. So we'd just like to have everyone join you, and we want your continued support. It's very important to us that, that the city supports us the way they do. So if you have any questions, JC will take them.
I got hard questions for you.
Oh, no.
Uh, let's see. The parade is the 6th of July, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's a little after the 4th, the way it lands this year in the calendar. Yeah.
I think it's about every 4th or 5th year of this.
Does that, yeah. Specialty Act is what this year?
John Payne, the one-armed bandit.
Like that. One of my favorites.
Yeah, he's a good, he's won the, in, in the PRCA, he's won the Professional Act of the Year many times. And also this year, we have Justin Rutherford, who's a top barrel man clown, and he's won the clown, rodeo clown of the year a bunch of different times. So, again, we've got really the top in the pro-rodeo business that come around, you know, come to our rodeo. And one of the reasons is we go out three or four years ahead of time and try to hire these good acts and the good people out three or four years ahead of time. That way, you make sure and get them, and we keep this a real, as high quality as we can.
Yeah, no, it's important. Questions, comments from the council?
I would definitely say, good job getting more activity at the, at the rodeo grounds. That's excellent.
Yeah, that, that.
It helps everybody.
That turned out really good, especially in August, when we really don't have a lot of things going on in the, at the rodeo grounds. This thing really turned out to be a big deal, and we're, we're, of course, glad to have it.
And thank you for taking care of the sheriff's posse. That's important.
Thank you. You're, well, I'm kind of part of that, too, I guess.
Well, thanks for being here today. I don't see Lizelle, a little disappointed. Where's he at today?
He keeps telling me he's got a job.
He's working.
He's got to make money.
Well, thanks, thanks for your work in the community. We appreciate it. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to proclamations.
The first proclamation is Prescott Heritage Trail History Hunt.
Well, it seems like today we're talking heritage. We've mentioned Elizabeth Ruffner, we've mentioned the rodeo. I'd also like to mention the Western Heritage Center. We're going to be doing a ribbon cutting on Thursday at 4:00, and this all kind of runs together, and so we're very excited about that. So we invite you all to come, 4:00, Western Heritage on Whiskey Row. You won't be able to miss this, and so come join us. Now, I'd like to read a proclamation to a wonderful group of people that it's been a pleasure to work with. Why don't you all come on up here? Mrs. Heine, come on up. Crawford, hello, Laurie. This has been going for quite a while. We're very excited about this. But before I read this, I'd like to recognize city manager back there somewhere, Michael Lamar. Michael came to group, working on some things with tourism and the Chamber and Western Heritage, and he said, you know, I have an idea. He said, how about we do something for Prescott like the Liberty Trail in Boston? And so we believe that our Western, our History Hunt is going to become as famous one day as the Liberty Trail. So here we go. Prescott Heritage Trail History Hunt. Whereas the Prescott Heritage Trail was launched in 2018 as a self-guided walking tour of Prescott's historical locations and cultural attractions, whereas through historic preservation efforts, locals and visitors alike can enjoy the cherished and preserved pieces of our past. Whereas in conjunction with the Prescott Heritage Trail, the History Hunt was created as an opportunity to combine the rich history of Prescott with arts, culture, western heritage, and natural beauty of our area. Whereas the History Hunt Adventure is a portion of the History, History Trail designed for children, families, students, and visitors comprised of nine sites that include questions and activities of various age levels. Whereas the History Hunt Adventure was made possible by collaborative, very collaborative effort between Western Heritage Center, the Charlotte Hall Museum, the Chamber of Commerce, Visitor Information Center, and the City of Prescott. And whereas the, a group of local community members and educators have worked tirelessly, and tirelessly, I will say double, to design the History Hunt Adventure format, questions, facts, booklet for this enriching activity for all to explore and to learn about our wonderful community's rich past. Whereas this fun and interactive experience proudly displays Prescott's history, western heritage, native heritage, culture, and arts in a beautiful setting. Now, therefore, Greg Mangarelli, the mayor of City of Prescott, does hereby recognize the Prescott Heritage Trail History Hunt Adventure and encourage all residents to take part in this new activity for all families. Congratulations.
So there's two of us who are going to be very brief with some comments, but good afternoon, Mayor, council members, members of the community, Mr. Lamar, Mr. Palladini. So I'm Ann Stewart at the Tourism Office, and it has been my complete pleasure to assist in this effort. As we mentioned briefly in the proclamation, the Heritage Trail launched last year, and the Heritage Trail is a self-guided walking tour that takes you, actually today, to 29 sites. It started with 25 last year, to some of, some of Prescott's historical and cultural attractions. You pick up the map at the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Information Center. And while we're talking about the Chamber and the Visitor Information Center, I just want to say that none of this could have really happened without them, because this is where our locals, our visitors, our students, our children are all going to get these maps and to also now get the booklet. So the booklet is basically an activity guide that takes you to nine of the sites, encourage you all to do it. It's categorized by age level, I'm not going to say too much, but go pick that up, too. So, a couple things on the Heritage Trail. We have estimated this year alone that we have given out over 1,000 Heritage Trail maps. More than that now, probably. And then also what's exciting is that there's been conferences and groups in town incorporating the Heritage Trail into some of their team building and social activities. So, for example, American Express was just here, and they incorporated this as their team building event. So I just want to thank the committee and everybody for all their time and effort. It's been my pleasure to assist them, and they've worked really, really hard, really hard on this, so get out there with your family and friends and do this. And I'd like to introduce Laurie Gochet, who just has a few comments about the booklet as well. Thank you.
There are several people in the audience that worked on this project. I would like you to come up, please. Kelly, Max and Anita, Dennis. Thank you. They tried to hide. However, they never hid in meetings. Thank you so much to the city council, mayor, for this proclamation. As Ann mentioned, it was last spring that the Prescott Heritage Trail was launched, and prior to that, John Hinni and Dennis, come up here. Dennis Gallagher, the president and founder of the Prescott Western Heritage Foundation, discussed how the foundation might be involved in creating a History Hunt for kids using some of the sites on the Prescott History Trail. Since I serve on the foundation board as chair of the Scholarship and Education Outreach Committee, Dennis asked me if I wanted to be involved, and I said, "Duh." Yeah. As a, at a subsequent meeting, my enthusiasm for the project got the best of me, and I volunteered to chair the project. We started with a small working group of stakeholders and then drew in the Charlotte Hall Museum, educators, and more community members. We adopted a motto for the History Hunt, which is on our buttons and on the, the guide, "Explore, Experience, and Preserve." From the original idea of a one-page scavenger hunt, the project grew to this booklet of information, activities, and questions for all ages, adults and kids. It includes information and activities related to the Frontier Days in Prescott, 1863 to 1912, when Arizona became a state. We did consult this book by Elizabeth Ruffner. Melissa, I, I, I'm sorry, I had your mother on my mind. By Elizabeth Ruffner. Melissa Ruffner. And decided that this was much more than we could fit into this activity guide. So we did limit it to the Frontier Days, 1863 to 1912. When students complete the History Hunt Adventure, they return to the Visitors Information Center, where a, their certificate that's in the back is signed by someone at the center, and where they receive one of these buttons. That says that they have received, that they have completed the Prescott History, Prescott Heritage Trail History Hunt Adventure. The guide has been designed to be a keeper. We purposely have just the back portion where we keep record of who has actually completed the project. We take that out, and then they, they keep the, the guide. And that has been done on purpose because we want kids, adults, families, and other groups to continue to explore, experience, and preserve the beautiful, unique heritage of this great city. All of those involved, some are missing, but those who are here, as well as those who have contributed in the other ways, agree that this has been a true labor of love over a year, right? I'm going to start crying. We are very proud to have been part of this project, to explore, experience, and preserve the history of our great city. We're proud to be Prescottonians.
Can I have just one undocumented thing to say? I started doing walking tours downtown in 1981, and my children were humiliated. Thank you for turning this over to this wonderful group and the city and.
Your idea was great. Thank you very much.
I think John got him. We're good.
All right, let's move on to item 7B, please.
Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month.
All right, everybody, this is a vroom, vroom moment. So raise your hands, who has a motorcycle in this crowd? Anybody?
It's so funny he's doing this.
All right. So come on down. Are you going to be up here and help me celebrate the Proclamation for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness?
Nice.
Welcome, come on up.
Thank you.
All right, this proclamation is for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for over 325,000 people across Arizona and millions across our nation. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of special skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment, and a thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas it is especially important that the residents of Arizona be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas all motorcycle rides are encouraged to hone their skills, no matter how long they've been riding. And whereas all highway users are, are being encouraged to be aware of motorcycles and safely share the roadway throughout Arizona. And that's not only all highway users, but all, all residential street users need to be aware of that also. And now, therefore, Greg Mangarelli, the mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Prescott, and encourages all residents to do, to do their part to increase awareness in our community. Gentlemen, ladies, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
My name's Dan. I'm the Yabapai Chapter Coordinator of A-BATE, and a lot of people say, what is A-BATE? A-BATE is an acronym for Brotherhood Aimed Through Education, and it's a, an MRO, a motorcycle rights organization. We're not a club or a gang, but we're out there to educate other riders, the community drivers, and get everybody on the same page. We're out there, we want people to be aware. We're aware of who are surroundings, and we need those in automobiles and trucks to be aware of us. And we want to thank mayor and council for this proclamation, thank the City of Prescott and all the residents, and it's great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 7C, please.
The last proclamation is for Memorial Day.
Mike, you want to come up and join me? Mr. Perry, would you like to come up and join me on this proclamation, recognizing Memorial Day?
Look, Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry has 73 consecutive years as an American Legion member. I've only got 29. So I remind him that I don't think I'm going to catch him and pass his record, unless I You know, over the years, as a veteran, I've had people come up to me and say, happy Memorial Day. So even though it kind of kicks off the summer season with barbecues and sometimes a day off from work, it's certainly not an occasion for levity or, or happiness, in my opinion. Memorial Day has its origins in Decoration Day, where the hundreds of thousands of soldiers who lost their lives in the Civil War, their graves were decorated. And the first real kind of publicized event happened way back in 1868, and since then, of course, it's been changed to recognize all veterans who gave their lives defending our country. So we call it Memorial Day today, and we will start off the ceremonies at our local cemetery, Citizen Cemetery, on Memorial Day, the 27th, starting at 9:00 AM. But this proclamation, recognizing Memorial Day by the city, reads, whereas it is essential to remember and renew the legacy of Memorial Day, which was established in 1868 to pay tribute to individuals who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to the United States and their families. And whereas on Memorial Day, we pause in solemn gratitude to pay tribute to the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice on our behalf and laid down their lives, defending peace and freedom while in military service to our great nation. The fallen deserve nothing less from a grateful nation. And whereas we remember them with thankfulness and unwavering pride. And we are humbled because we remember that the wealth of this nation's heritage, this strength of its ideals and the extent of its freedom came at the expense of American lives. A cost borne prominently by several generations who've bright futures, hopes and dreams were sacrificed for the abundance of opportunities we now freely pursue. And therefore Greg L. Mangerelli, mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby encourage all citizens to designate the minute beginning at 3:00 PM local time on Monday, May 27th, 2019, as a time for all Americans to observe the national moment of remembrance as passed by United States Public Law 106-579. And to remember, we must safeguard the legacies of our service members so that our children and our grandchildren will understand the sacrifices of our armed forces members. So, Mary, do you wanna mention what's gonna be happening at the National Cemetery on this day as well?
Yes, thank you. Hello, everybody, I'm Mary Dillinger, Public Affairs Officer at the Prescott VA, also Army Veteran. And our event at the Prescott National Cemetery is on Monday, the 27th, at 11:00 AM. So, it's set up that way so that those who wish to attend, the Citizens Cemetery Event, you have enough time to get from there to the Prescott National Cemetery for our event, that is, at 11:00 AM. And on Saturday, the 25th, starting at 8:00 AM, we are placing the little American flags on the gravestones at the cemetery for any volunteers who would like to come by and help with that as well.
Thank you, Mary.
Any members wanna pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman Lamerson?
I would like item H and item I taken off the consent agenda.
Items H and item I, anyone else? Okay, look for a motion on that.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8L excluding H and I.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's look at items H and I. These both deal with eminent domain. And I'd ask Mr. Palladino to kinda give us some background on, on both these if you would.
Sure, Mayor. These are, these two resolutions authorize the city to file eminent domain action on two separate properties related to two separate public works projects, one being a flood and drainage project on Hope Street and the other being the replacement of the Government Canyon Bridge on the east side of town. In both situations, the city's been able to reach, reach agreement with multiple property owners for other easements and other pieces of property that we, that the city needs for these projects. And in each situation or in each location, there is a holdout, a single holdout that essentially is holding up these projects. Both of these projects are directly related to public health and safety, the drainage and flood control project, as well as the replacement of the bridge. And so, lest anyone think that we sort of recommend this lightly, we do not. In my six and a half years here, we have never recommended a condemnation action and we have literally done this over a thousand times in terms of acquiring small pieces of property for various public works projects. So, it's a very, very tiny percentage. It's a tool in our toolbox that we use very, very, very sparingly, as the, as the numbers would tell you. And in both situations, we do have appraisals as to the value of the property as we're required to. So, the taking would, would, we've, you know, would, would be subject to the payment of just compensation, which is both the Arizona and US constitutional standard. As far as if you want more detail about the projects themselves, the Public Works Department is here and they could talk about that.
Craig, would you wanna add anything in that regard? Or any public works staff for that matter?
So, the first, first one on the agenda was the Government Canyon Bridge. So, this parcel specifically deals with this area right here. Okay, here's another vision, vision of it. And actually today, we just got word from Arizona State Land that the parcel on the north side has been completed through Arizona State Land, so we have that. So, now indeed it is just this single parcel that is the last holdout for this. This is a project that the city earned a grant through ADOT in order to replace the bridge. In 2013, the bridge was deemed unsafe or in need of replacement, has been under design over a couple of years since then, and we've been working on these easements as well. Another easement has also been acquired from the hotel to let this project move forward as soon as we have this remaining one resolved.
Right. So, on this case, it's a slope easement we're actually wanting to purchase, which really isn't taking their land as much as it is an easement on a steep slope in this canyon.
Correct. And it's actually right in the creek canyon itself. So, it is like for the embutment walls of, of the bridge and the slope to allow for proper grading next to the new bridge.
And in the other case, in this neighborhood, all the other easements have been purchased, given that, that we need. In that case, there's just the one holdout.
This is the last one, being that we got Arizona State Land notice earlier today.
Right. But in the other easement situation, the eminent domain item...
The Hope Street?
On Hope Street, all those easements have been purchased that you need in that case, except the one.
And just, and just to, before we go to Hope Street on Government Canyon, the, because it's a ADOT grant that came from the Federal Highway Administration, there's also a timing issue on this. That's why, you know, unfortunately, we just don't have the luxury of trying to further negotiate this transaction. And in that case, we got two appraisals, or essentially an appraisal and then a review of an appraisal, which is required by ADOT and the federal grant. So, you know, we're sort of stuck at this point if we're gonna do this project. And as Craig said, it is a significant safety issue with that bridge.
Okay. And then with the Hope Street one, this, this project is to address drainage issues and property damage in the neighborhood. As you can see here, this is a very large puddle, that is the street. And over here by this property, there are sandbags because they have to protect that property during different storm events. So, this is, this project is to get, you know, take care of the dirt street that's out there, as well as the drainage problems that are damaging private property there. So, then the project, this is Hope Street around here, will, will eliminate that dirt street from the city's inventory and, and take care of those property damage issues.
Very good. Thank you, Craig.
And to answer your question, Mayor, we did require multiple other drainage easements on, to complete that Hope Street project. And this is the, unfortunately, it's the, it's the one holdout. So, we made best efforts to try and negotiate purchases based on the appraisal, unfortunately just to no avail. So, that's why we're recommending approval to proceed forward.
Well, I appreciate your comments earlier, John. You know, this body does not take lightly eminent domain. This is not something that we want to choose to do. We, we try to go at this with every other effort to make it work for these property owners. But in these cases, public health and safety is, is eminent. It's important. And, you know, like you said thousands of times, we do these kinds of things and never run into this. But in these cases, it was pertinent to exercise eminent domain, unfortunately. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that a lot of people, when they hear the words eminent domain, they're concluding that a government is going in and actually taking people's property away from them. In this case, the term taking is sometimes that, but sometimes it's a case of diminished value. And that's why we are compensating these owners with a fair compensation for just primarily access to parts of their property that would solve a clear and compelling public safety issue. In the one case, the irrigation and drainage problems. And in the other case, being able to repair this bridge and allow the, actually this slope easement is gonna provide some potential value to the slope that connects with the creek bed. So, in this case, we're not taking people's property away, we're compensating them for a clear and compelling public need. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clearly stated. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll look for a motion. Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items H and I.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to item 9A.
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1661 authorizing the quitclaim to Prescott College Incorporated all right title or interest in the real property described in the attached quitclaim deed and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said quitclaim.
Okay, looking for a motion? Mayor, I move to, to adopt ordinance number 2019-1661.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 10A, please.
Mayor and council, the first liquor license is for a public hearing and considerations for a new Series 9 liquor store license from Kim Kwiatkowski, applicant for Circle K Store 9525 located at 940 Willow Creek Road. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The application fee has been paid and it has been posted at the site for 20 days and the applicant is not in attendance today.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then we'll go ahead and go to the motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 56734 for a new Series 9 liquor license, liquor store, liquor license for Circle K Store number 9525 located at 940 Willow Creek Road.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to the next liquor license.
The next liquor license is for a public hearing and consideration for a series, a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license from Baum Maya Bang, applicant for Fujiyama Japanese Restaurant and Sushi Bar located at 1781 East Highway 69, number 15. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The application fee has been paid and the sign has been posted at the site for 20 days and the applicant is not in attendance today.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to a motion then.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 59591 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Fujiyama Japanese Restaurant and Sushi Bar located at 1781 East Highway 69, number 15.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 11A, please.
Appointment of Members to the Board of Adjustment and the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee.
Mayor, we have two individuals that we're going to be asking to take the oath today. We have Jerry Kaufman, who is, will be with the Board of Adjustment. Jerry, would you like to come up to the podium? And we also have Mr. Dennis Stringer, who will be joining the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee. So, I'd like to make a motion, gentlemen, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Let me find it here. I move to approve the recommendations of Council Subcommittee Appointments for Appointments to the Board of Adjustment and Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, I think you're gonna do an oath of office.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
Would you please hold up your right hand and repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Terry Somley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of committee member.
Of committee member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, I do affirm.
So, I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Let's move on to item 11B, please.
Public Hearing for City of Prescott's Community Development Block Grant Program Draft, PY 2019 Annual Action Plan and Adoption of the CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mayor Protem as well. We are continuing our public hearing process for the CDBG Annual Action Plan. You may recall that a few weeks ago, we presented at council and introduced the annual plan to you, as well as had some of our Citizens Advisory Committee members present about the specific grant awards that have been made through this year's process. Just by way of recap, for those in attendance, the city of Prescott is a CDBG, what is known as a CDBG entitlement community. That means that we get an annual allocation. It usually is about $250,000. And it is allocated for the purpose of supporting public service projects that are certain nonprofit agencies and other community organizations manage to benefit low and moderate income individuals in our community and also to support construction projects that are to the benefit of the public good. This could be anything from accessibility ramps being added to public buildings and/or agency, nonprofit agency facilities, or expansion of services and/or installation of HVAC for something like the US Vets Whipple Street Project, which is one of our awards for this year. So, I just wanted to do a little review. We've actually conducted, this will be the fourth public hearing for this process. We had two public hearings in March with the Citizens Advisory Committee. Those were publicly noticed and the public was invited to attend and review the grant making process. We also did a council information presentation on it on April the 23rd. And today, we are here to complete the public hearing obligations under this process so that we can move forward to the actual specifics of getting the bids collected and contracts signed and environmental reviews performed so that these projects can be moved forward. Here's a little recap of some of the programs that, and projects that have benefited through this year's grant making process. Senior Peer Mentoring with West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, People Who Care, who provides a tremendous transportation service for seniors that is completely volunteer driver-wise. Teen Workforce Development Program through the Launchpad, which is in the news quite a bit lately. And also Services for Homeless and Shelter Improvements through Prescott Area Shelter Services, Coalition for Compassion and Justice, and as I mentioned, Veterans Housing Improvements for the new US Vets Facility on Whipple Street. Here's a little bit more detail on those projects. This outlines the grant awards themselves. Our allocation, when we started the grant making process, is based off of last year's allocation received, which was $258,000. We did get confirmation during the process, after these grant awards were made, that we are, that amount is dipping just slightly for this plan year to $244,000. But we are able to adjust the amount of administrative support from the CDBG funds so that none of our grantees will receive any less than they were awarded through the grant making Next steps for the process are basically today to pass a resolution that accepts the annual action plan and to formally close the public hearing. Community development staff will then work with agencies on bids, agreements, environmental reviews, et cetera. And then all work begins after July 1st in the new fiscal year and when we have all reviews and signed agreements in hand. With that, I would be available to respond to any questions. With that, I would be available to respond to any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, well, thank you, Bren. Do we need to do these separately? Okay. Look for a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the final public hearing on the CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 19 Hearing, and I'll wait to the next one.
Yes, sir. We need a second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, and to adopt resolution number 2019-1685.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thanks, Bren.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 11C.
Award a city contract number 2019-209 to Cactus Transport Incorporated, DBA Cactus Asphalt for the FY19 pavement preservation chip seal.
Craig Dotseth, Public Works. First item I have today for you is to approve city contract number 2019-209 with Cactus Transportation, DBA Cactus Asphalt for chip seal and striping in the amount of $548,314.57. We won't say and change. Also in the approval is a request for Sunday work, work scheduled between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Gail Gardner Way from Iron Springs Road to Fair Street to perform work when traffic impacts will be significantly reduced. This is a type of work that has to be done during daylight hours for temperatures, and we felt that definitely going to the Sunday work on that Gail Gardner stretch can help by having much less impact on the traveling public. So ultimately, this project is covering three locations of work. The first location is State Route 89 from Willow Lake Road to connection with the recently completed State Route 89 widening. Okay, and there will be, the next item that I bring forward will be additional work. We're just kind of out of order here on which one we're talking about first. There will be other work associated with the road up there as well. The next project on that road section up there will chip seal the entire roadway following the mill pave to make all surfaces identical and replace the permanent striping. Striping improvements will be included at the intersection of Granite Dells Road to realign the curve radius to improve site distances, and Mayor Protem Orr has been involved in communications there with the Bicycle and Transportation Committee in regards to Granite Dells Road and visibility when you come out to the stop sign there. So, through this project, we're able to realign the curve a little further west and re-stripe it, so then the stop bar and the stop sign can come out further and improve the site distance with that as well. The second location where we'll be doing work is Gail Gardner Way, and that'll have pavement spot repairs completed under this contract, and then the chip seal will be applied over the top of those repairs to help the existing asphalt last as long as possible before full reconstruction is needed. And if you're familiar with that section in there, it's gotten really bad on us.
On the north end, I'm very familiar, yeah.
Big O tires to fair. It's gotten really bad quick, and we're afraid that it's going to fall out from under us if we don't do something to hold it together here.
Yep.
Then the third location is the Peavine Trail parking lot, so we're working in conjunction with Recreation Services in order to have chip seal placed on the parking lot there to preserve and extend the life expectancy of the parking lot surface. This portion of the project will be funded by Recreation Services, but ultimately, in conjunction with our projects, then they get to benefit of not having Mobe costs and such by linking it in with the other two locations. The procurement method recommended for this item is utilizing city code under the Cooperative Use Clause. So, with the cooperative purchasing element, it's available to use through a Pinal County contract with cost competitive procurement process. This process also includes the cost savings associated with a high volume of work included on the Pinal County contract. We also did this recently with like the crack ceiling. We used cooperative use with Yavapai County, and that worked out very well. Staff selected Cactus Asphalt to provide a cost estimate for this chip seal project from that Pinal County contract to choose them. If it goes forward today, then the notice to proceed would be the week of May 27th, commence construction the week of June 15th, and completion on June 26th. So, there's a very fast process, very short timeframe in there. Funding for the contract is available from the Streets Fund in the FY19 budget and General Fund for the Peavine Trailhead Parking. City standard cooperative purchasing contract would be used for this project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, yeah, thank you, Craig. You mentioned Streets and General Fund. You're using some monies for the parking lot at the Peavine Trail that are really designated funds from the parking permit fee, right?
I believe so. We do not have Recreation Services.
That is, that's what I learned as I did some research leading up to the meeting, Mark, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so while you mentioned General Fund, it is a fund that's
Okay, yes.
From the parking permits that you purchase when you go to the parking lot there or around the city. Let's see, Councilman Blair.
Craig, I think you answered the question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I'm not opposed to Sunday, but is it open-ended, and they're going to do it more than one Sunday, or is it just one Sunday?
It's one Sunday for the chip seal. The spot repairs will be done during the week with traffic control flaggers with one-lane closures by those spots, but then one Sunday, get in there, get it done, out.
That's good. Just so the public knows, it's not extended more Sundays than one.
No.
Thank you.
I'm assuming, Craig, with this winter, that that probably has affected some of these roads like this, you know, where I know they were starting to fail, but then all this moisture and snow really kind of accelerated in some cases.
Absolutely, and we even saw it again last week, that a lot of the potholing work that we had done popped right out again last week with our moisture.
Mm-hmm. That's the challenges of being mile high, I suppose, and having fluctuations in weather. Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, mayor.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2019-209.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item 11D.
Award a city contract to Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated, including night work for the SR89 pavement rehabilitation project.
So, this next item now is kind of leading into the chip seal on State Route 89. So, along with approving the contract for Sunland Asphalt, then we're also looking to approve night work associated with this project, being requested for the hours of 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., being that we are dealing with Highway 89 throughout the Dells from the Willow Lake Roundabout going north. This one is going to be very important to be able to do that night work and reduce it down to single lane for that construction. So, some background on this, in 2011, the city entered into an IGA pertaining to transfer of the ownership of this section of State Route 89 with the Arizona Department of Transportation. Then there was also a subsequent memo of understanding with Yavapai County pertaining to maintenance responsibilities of this section of State Route 89. The IGA was all lumped together with Fane Road going from the county to ADOT, this section of 89 going to the city, and the south section of 89 by the VA, the county maintains in there, so they were kind of all lumped together in that IGA. The agreement covered State Route 89 from the roundabout at Willow Lake Road to just south of State Route 89 interchange. Both the IGA and the MOU had performance measures for the jurisdictions associated with the road maintenance. There will be a little more to come, associated with that, coming up. The pavement now has deteriorated beyond preservation methods and requires rehabilitation. So, the rehab will take into place milling and then pavement replacement will be completed on the primary travel lanes and a few specific areas where the existing pavement is in very poor condition. We are not doing edge-to-edge 100% of the entire roadway because like the shoulders and the center lane where there's no traffic is not in the same condition that the travel lanes are. This, again, is considered to be a project to give us a certain life expectancy till we get to the point of total reconstruction. Procurement on this one's proposed method utilizing cooperative purchasing ability under Arizona State, Arizona Revised Statutes, ARS, and per city code. The contract will utilize cost competitive procurement process completed by One Government Procurement Alliance, One GPA. They are state and nationwide. Public Works selected Sunland Asphalt and Construction, Inc. from available cooperative purchasing agencies, and Sunland produced cost estimate from One GPA bid documents for the SR89 pavement rehabilitation project. Public Works did receive one local call regarding the cost of the project. So, with that, we stepped back, and we triple-checked the pricing including, included in the One GPA competitive process. Staff completed additional work to compare several recent paving projects that were hard bid by Public Works and found them to be comparative and competitive with the pricing we have on this recommendation. The caller also completed a bid comparison and found the pricing to be in line with their work as well, once they had the full picture of the project with night work, extensive traffic control, oil and firebury requirements, and the challenges of the State Route 89 So, ultimately, if this is passed today, then the notice to proceed would be the week of May 20th, commence construction on June 1st, and in completion by June 19th. So, this work would be done on State Route 89, and then following right behind will come the Cactus Chip Seal Project then, that will completely cover the entire roadway, making it all uniform vision, as well as then reestablish the striping with that new curve radius in there. Funding for the contract is available from the Streets Fund in the FY19 budget. City standard cooperative purchasing agreement will be used for this project. One thing that's important to note is that the IGAs, that IGAs with both ADOT and Yavapai County will be coming forward on future meetings. We've been in negotiation with both those agencies due to requirements that were in the original IGA and MOU for maintenance of the road, so we have negotiated with them. ADOT is going to contribute $315,000 towards this project, and Yavapai County, $250,000. So, by working with them, it has turned out well. So, we will have those IGAs coming forward to you before the end of this fiscal year.
That's good. Thank you, Craig. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good.
Thank you, mayor. Wasn't the county working on rehabilitating a bridge in this section?
No.
My other question was, when this is completed, how much longevity do we expect from the roadway?
Minimum of 10 years.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'd just like to really point out the collaboration that went on to get all of this done, and Craig, I really applaud your team in part of this. Simpo, Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, they, Chris Bridges was able to move some funding around and to provide some funding for this project. Also, ADOT, he pulled the pieces together, he and Craig, really made this work, so thank you for your work, and I appreciate Simpo and Christopher Bridges for stepping up and helping us with this. It's truly ADOT, the county, the city, Simpo, it was great collaboration. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from the council? Public comment?
No, mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2019-208 to Sunland Asphalt and Construction, Inc.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, Craig. Let's move on to item 11E.
Adopt resolution number 2019-1689 declaring as a public record that certain document filed with city clerk are amending Prescott City Code and adopt ordinance number 2019-1662 amending Title III, Chapter 3-14, development fees, adopting development fees, adding a severance clause, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Maureen. Mayor and council, Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. We've talked about this one or two times over the last several months. We started this process in August, following the wonderful process that by the infinite wisdom of our state legislature, they have placed on the process of impact fees. Again, these are impact fees we're talking about today. They are only on new construction. They are not on infill projects unless, of course, meters need to be upsized, and then it's only on the differential. So, this is new construction as we look at, not infill-type issues. With that, we have our consultant, who has been before council many times over the last many months, Andrew Ream with Raff Tellis, is going to run us through a presentation to go over this, probably only take an hour or two. We shall be good.
Is that all? Thanks, Mark. So, part of this is, for those that are just tuning in, but I promise to keep it a little high level. As Mark indicated, this is kind of the, one of the last pieces in the process, a rather long process, and for many of you that have been through this discussion before, involved in setting the fees, it has been about nine months. So, just to kind of bring it up to the top in terms of the three main outcomes of this study, first and foremost, we updated existing utility development impact fees, and as part of that update, we're recommending consolidating water system fees from currently 10 service areas throughout the water service area in city to two. The wastewater system impact fee, consolidate that from nine existing service areas down to one, and the water resource fee has citywide, water service area-wide service area, and we would like to maintain that, and proposing to maintain it. The third component is, as part of a feasibility for nonutility development impact fees, we're proposing the city bring back. I've had these before, but for the three infrastructure categories of streets, police and fire, so for about, I guess since 2012, 13, these fees haven't been in place, and we're proposing that they be adopted and implemented later this year. In terms of just kind of the overall process, this chart depicts the statutorily required kind of steps going back to November of 2018, when there was, you know, notice of intent that land use assumption, infrastructure improvement plan was, there's going to be a public hearing, and we published documents, and then it kind of ensued to where we are today, which is the impact fee, public hearing. I know we've talked about the fees and the assessment in a variety of venues up till now, but this is kind of the step where we're asking for action, and as the ordinance indicates, and the changes in code. The intent is to have the fees implemented effective August 1st of 2019, five years after the previous fees were effective for the last time we had done the study. As part of the process, we engaged mayor's commission. It was established for this specific purpose. The commission's role was really to serve as a sounding board, kind of eyes and ears, dig into the details, advise us, city staff, and you all regarding our overall mission and charge between utility and nonutility impact fees, as well as this sort of three-pronged set of documents and requirements. The commission members, as noted, they, it was really a great representation of kind of different areas of the development and building communities, where, you know, sometimes these may be single-family only, or single-family oriented, or, you know, commercial, or kind of master planned community developments, and really gave us a perspective from, you know, design side, engineering, single-family, commercial construction, as well as property know, design side, engineering, single-family, commercial construction, as well as property management, multifamily. We completed four meetings, the last of which was held earlier this year, January 9th, and, and essentially had worked through some questions, vetted projects, pulled projects out, and so what we ultimately proposed within the fee documents that were published a couple of months ago, as well as talking about today, was a result of, of that process that we went through with, with these particular stakeholders. In terms of the timeline, there's a little bit more of the specific dates I alluded to with, with the steps. I think I counted it, and in terms of just, you know, setting aside the rate study, I think this is the fifth kind of formal discussion or presentation with city council, going all the way back to August, September, when, when we began the study. So as bolded, the kind of the last steps is ultimately, you know, kind of the vote, and if approved, those modified fees would go into effect. So all the kind of works and the steps, the proposed fees summarized here, the water system, the two service areas that we're proposing to kind of maintain, we've got service area A, which is sort of the northern part of the water service territory, really up by the production wells, and then service area B picks up the rest of the city. Today, water system fees range from 2,200 to, you know, 4,100 for that kind of service area B component, and it picks up, everybody participates in A. We're proposing to increase that to service area B, that single area, to roughly 5,300, and this is for the base meter size. As noted and included in, in the Chapter 3-14, they increase by meter size, and you can see the kind of different fees, if you will. It's, it's all proportional. We're, we're not modifying kind of that schedule or that scale. So the, the, you know, base fees sort of drive that, and then they increase for the increased demands that come along with larger meters. When it comes to the water resource fee, it's a modest decrease, and this fee really funds the city's portion of debt that was issued for big geno projects some years ago. And so that kind of makes sense. It's a little more contained, controlled, less volatile area that, that's not subject to, say, a capital plan or construction cost environment. Same way, the water system, wastewater system fees do pick that up. Lastly, wastewater, the nine service areas range, the lowest one today is roughly 2,000, the highest one is, is upwards of just under 3,600, again for that base water meter size, and we're proposing a single fee of $3,000. The second kind of area, if you will, the nonutility impact fees that I, I spoke to a minute ago, these are assessed a little bit differently, and we're proposing three, streets, police, and fire. And we can see with residential customers, we had developed, and this was based on some feedback discussion, both with city staff as well as the mayor's commission, kind of tiered schedule, if you will, that varied by house size. So if you, coming in with a new dwelling unit that's 1,800 square feet or less, there's a set of fees that apply. You're in the middle range, 1,800 to 2,600, that's what, you know, classified as the medium size, if you will. And then those structures, livable square feet above 2,600, would be assessed the highest flat fee. And on the residential side, you fall within one of those bands, but it's basically a flat fee for each dwelling unit, if you will. Single-family residential structure would be one, and if you had an apartment complex with, say, 10, then, then you would be assessed based on the size of those units, the, the different fee per unit. For nonresidential, these are assessed per square feet. And so the, the ranges here, and you can see, kind of pick up the different charges for the different fees per square foot, and then there's three kind of groupings. One is industrial, the bottom one is retailer restaurants, you know, kind of those activities that generate a lot of traffic, have a lot of people coming and going. And then the middle is office and sort of other services and other nonresidential developments that aren't retail restaurants or industrial. Over on the right, we, we see kind of the total for this fee area, and really, you know, part of kind of evaluating what this means is looking at some, you know, fee comparisons and really how these turn into the assessment for particular developments. So I know this kind of series of slides have been presented before, and we've tried to consolidate these a bit in, in terms of what we're comparing to. But to start out with an office, you know, 5,000 square foot, developed building, kind of common size for, for new construction for this land use within the city, a 5/8 inch water meter and 25 fixture units, the current kind of maximum fee, recalling there's a bit of a range with water and wastewater, is reflected by the utility fees. Those are the only impact fees that, that are assessed by the city today. So new development coming in, under the fee schedule today, would pay roughly $9,100. Under the proposed fees that include the establishment or reestablishment, if you will, of three additional categories, and kind of the mix of the impact or the effect on the utility fees, that would be a one-time fee for this new construction, new development, roughly 18,000. And so certainly an increase over today. In terms of the, the cities, you know, most adjacent or close by neighbor, Prescott Valley also, you know, entity that, that, you know, a lot of the same developers, a lot of the same entities may work in both communities, their fee for the same land use, the same sort of type of development would be roughly $12,000 today. So certainly above the city, but a bit below what, what is being proposed. Now with restaurants, and as you recall, we've got kind of different unit prices. So for this one, the utility fees are the same, same meter size, but the nonutility streets, police, and fire are a bit higher, and driven based on either the number of square feet or the, the cost per square foot. So restaurants and retail entities tend to be a little higher activity, a little higher impact on services, and that's why the street police and fees reflect that difference, if you will. Fire is a little bit lower, kind of how that is assessed, a little less based on traffic generations, driven based on employment, if you will. And that same sort of current fee compared to, in this case, higher proposed fee with this particular development of roughly 26,000. And in Prescott Valley, that, that same development would be assessed 16,000, or quite a bit over current city fees, but under what is being proposed. When it comes to retail, this, you know, essentially same land use category, fee assessment category is, is restaurants, but in this case, we've doubled the size of the building, and it's requiring a larger meter size. So we can kind of see the, the mix and the blend of, again, the current fee, what the proposed fee would come up to be, and how Prescott Valley assesses the same or similar fee categories. I didn't highlight this, I know it's footnoted, but when comparing to Prescott Valley, they do have a fire district, so there isn't a fire fee that comes through, you know, assessments, property taxes. So it can be a little tricky to do a full-on kind of apples-to-apples comparison across communities. When it comes to residential, and, and this is really in that medium-sized, a, a single-family, you know, detached residential dwelling unit between 1,800 and 2,600 square feet, the, the base meter size is sufficient to provide the utility demands. So again, we see that same $9,100 with the fees in place today, and then the proposed fees would take that up about $2,300 per connection, and that is in line with Prescott Valley, and again, the same comment on the fire fee. But I, I would characterize the proposed city and Prescott Valley fees as, is the same, just given how close they are together. The last category, and, and this was certainly one of the drivers when we were looking at the fee assessment schedules on, on residential side, and the request to really kind of break out and develop a different scale for different sized residential developments, supporting affordability, providing, you know, access to affordable housing, that was certainly a concern with stakeholder, city staff, and, and something that, that we're, we're aware of as well. So with this 10 dwelling unit apartment complex, if you will, the current fees are roughly 30,000, and the utility fees are driven based on meter size, and so we see kind of those changes with the existing fees side by side, and, and what that would mean. And then the nonutility fees, this is picked up in the small-size residential category, and assessed for the, the 10 separate dwelling units. So it would, in total, the one-time assessment across all categories would increase from 30,000 to 43,000 or so, and compares favorably to Prescott Valley with that same sort of development there, being assessed $65,000 fee.
So maybe you mentioned this while I stepped out, but why is it that Prescott Valley is able to charge an impact fee for parks and recs, and, and we don't?
Part of the assessment that we had completed early on was to look at the projects for parks and recs, as well as library, and we had had a, a potential park fee really up until, I'd say, January, kind of February, with a couple of projects that qualified. And then just as part of the process, we, you know, kind of city staff, stakeholders, you know, we, we all kind of determined to
Okay.
Hold the park projects, and then there goes the fee.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. So with this, I mean, I know you guys have been through this discussion, as Mark indicated several times, and we've got documents out there, talked about the projects previously, so this, this is sort of the last prepared slide, if you will, and I don't know if there's any questions, comments, or...
Questions, comments from the council? No? Okay. Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Good?
Mark, with these new impact fees applying to police and fire protection and services, will those dollars be going into the general fund to fund operation?
No. No, impact fees are only used for capital expansion to maintain service levels. They go into a separate fund?
It has to be capital for fire stations and substations and things like that.
Stations, substations, and initial equipment purchases. If you need a new truck, if you need new squad cars, not replacement squad cars, but additions to the fleet.
So will we be escrowing those dollars for future building of capital?
They, they go into a capital projects fund, which is a special revenue fund. They go in, they're invested, you know, in more of our long-term investments that we do to earn interest, which goes back against those funds.
That's my understanding. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor. I think I'd just like to emphasize that this is one way that we have for growth, paying for growth. It's like the one mechanism that we have. So I think that's important for people to realize, as we're increasing these fees, it's really for the future growth.
Other questions, comments from the council? You said no public comment? All right. In that case, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2019-1689.
Second?
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1662.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are we, is there, I know you had it up there earlier, but is there any more steps in this process?
No, not for council. There's a lot of steps for staff as they try to figure out how to implement this, especially with the grandfathering requirements of the law, and we just move forward, and the publication to the public as we go, it will become effective August 1st, which Andrew mentioned. But there's also grandfathering related to existing subdivisions, have up to two years from first building permit, that they stay on the old fees before they go to the new. It's a nightmare.
Sounds fun. Let's move on to item 11F.
Adoption of resolution number 2019-1691 approving the Kyle Street water line development agreement with Westridge Preserve LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Roach with Public Works. So the item before you this afternoon is a development agreement with Westridge Preserve LLC, otherwise known as Tommy Deveraux, a local developer who's building the Preserve subdivision. This development agreement is for the construction of a 12-inch water line off of Kyle Street. Kyle Street is located just south of Iron Springs Road, right here, and then this is Kyle Street running along here. The area highlighted in red is where the water main extension will occur. This project was identified in the city's 2013 master plan, our, our water and wastewater models master plan document. This particular area is otherwise known as Zone 48, and Zone 48 currently only has one water main in and one, that's it, one water main into the entire area. And for any healthy water system, we like to see looping or redundancy within the system so we can isolate areas when we have issues, and we have another way for water to come into the zone, and that's why it was identified in the master plan. When Mr. Deveraux brought in his Preserve Phase 3B project, we approached him and asked him if he would partner with us to construct the Kyle Street water main, because it is very close to where he's doing improvement for his own project, the Preserve Phase 3B. The development agreement calls for Mr. Deveraux to design and pay for the as-builts for the project, and the city will pay for the construction and the inspections fees. We estimate the cost of this project to be about $170,000 under the engineer's estimate. Once Mr. Deveraux constructs it and brings us the actual payments, we will be coming back to you to reimburse him for the cost of the construction inspection. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this project.
Questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I recommend to adopt resolution number 2019-1691.
Can we bundle these together here, in the contract?
I think we should be able to.
Yeah, it's one, it's one item.
You can keep going there, Mr. Mayor.
And to approve city contract number 2019-226.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you, Gwen. We'll move on to item 11G.
Award a city contract to Fan Contracting Incorporated for the Yavapai Hills Drainage Improvements Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Stewart, Public Works. Today, Public Works is requesting your support in awarding city contract number 2019-225 to Fan Contracting Incorporated for the Yavapai Hills Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $169,000, $444.53. Over the last year, especially during monsoon season, Public Works tracked over 150 drainage complaints that came into the city, and a handful of those projects actually qualified for public funds to actually remedy. And to qualify for public funds, we were looking for basically water that left our right-of-way and entered private property, putting private property at risk for flood The Yavapai Hills subdivision had severe storms during July 2018, and numerous local residents experienced flooding. The most severe flooding was on Hornet Drive, on the north end of the subdivision. The storm event during which these photos were taken was a 50-year storm event, which should have been contained within the right-of-way, and unfortunately, there was storm water that overtopped the sidewalks.
Is this, that top picture, is that water all the way across?
Yes, sir. So what you're seeing, Mr. Mayor, is water from the top of curb to the top of curb for the whole width of Hornet Drive. And then the lower photos are from someone's front yard, water coming down over the sidewalk onto private property.
Be cheaper to get on canoes?
We did not consider that.
It's a lot of water. I thought we were under the impression that water, all, all the water belonged to SRP. Isn't this their problem?
Eventually, it does. Thank you, council member. The, to mitigate this potential for flooding on Hornet Drive, we've identified three locations to install vein grates across the full width of the street, and that's basically, if I can do this here, at three locations along Hornet Drive, where we had significant collection of stormwater that we'd like to peel it off and send it off to existing tracks and, and drainage easements that we currently have with the Yavapai Hills Homeowners Association. Yavapai Hills Homeowners Association. This is one location on Hornet Drive. The top image is basically a Google Maps image of this corner, where we had also curb-to-curb flows up to the edge of the sidewalk. And the top is basically, kind of, you can see without the stormwater, and the bottom is the 50-year event that we recorded out in Yavapai Hills. And the solution that we're proposing in this contract, you've seen before, this is the actual veined grate lateral drain that we used on a larkin to basically solve that drainage problem on a larkin.
Is this the only place where there's been flooding in Yavapai Hills with the...
No, this is not. Well, we had seven areas that we had severe drainage issues. And what we did is we identified, we prioritized these seven, and this was the highest priority because of what you saw in the images. And to kind of look forward to answer the rest of your question, we're approaching city council with new budget items for next fiscal year to address the other six items.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be happy answering your questions prior to your consideration for award of this contract.
Questions or comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2019-225.
Second?
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Eric. All right. Let's move on to item 11H, which is a legislative update. Councilman Lamerson asked how long this meeting was going to be today, and I said it was going to take 90 minutes. So...
I'm negative two minutes.
Exactly.
Thank you for the warning. You've been warned.
I appreciate the warning. Honestly, this won't take long, because really, nothing has happened in the last three weeks at all at the legislature. They're still talking about budget, the House, the Senate, the governor's office. I actually just got an email during the last meeting of a rumor that the House was going to send up a version of the budget to the governor's office today. That's not verified. It might be true. But I did talk to Barry at the end of last week, and he did confirm that the hotshot funding is in discussions. It's Senator or President Fan's number one consideration in the budget, so that carries a lot of weight. The version that he saw, the hotshot funding, had it spread out over seven years, so a million a year for seven years, which isn't perfect or ideal, but it's better than nothing, and we would take that happily, as well as the terminal funding, the million dollars on top of the regular ADOT matching money. So that's still in the works. And we hope that it will be over soon. If you look through the list, most of the bills that we were concerned about are gone. The Marketplace, the Nexus bill, is actually going to be part of the budget discussions and not on its own any longer. Vacation Rentals passed out of the Senate with a minor amendment, so it's going back to the House for a concurrent vote, and then it should go to the governor's office to be signed. And the Highway Safety Fee and the Digital Goods, those are two bills that we really worried about. They look to be dead this session, which is good news. And then the HERF funding, that additional 200 and... Yes, Mayor Proten?
So being dead, does that mean that $32 remains?
Yes. Yes, unless there's other...
It's a HERF.
Yeah. Yeah. And it really is, which is good. And the last bill, the HERF distribution, which would help us in an increase of 276,000 estimated, is still, they have a lot of bills just being held on to while budgets are being discussed. But that, there's nothing indicating that it would fail, so it should progress as they try to wrap up the session. And that's all I have.
And lemonade is a state drink.
Yeah, I did not mention.
I prefer bourbon, but I didn't get it.
I saw that, lemonade. Questions or comments for Tyler from the council? Okay. Thank you, Tyler. This is a quote from Mark Twain today, since we just had Mother's Day. "My mother had a great deal of trouble with me, but I think she enjoyed it." This meeting is adjourned.